The time is now 6:30 and we will get this regular meeting of the Board of Westminster Public School started. Veronica, can you please call roll?
Mr. Troncho?
Yes.
Mr. David Ek?
Here.
Mr. Math?
Here.
Mr. McCoy?
Present.
Mr. Valenti?
Present.
Next item of business is the Pledge of Allegiance and if we could please get John and Victor, our cameramen, to please lead us in the pledge. You can stay where you're at. I know you've got to deal with your cameras, but from where you're at, please lead us.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And gentlemen, Dino Valente does have pins for you that you can wear when you're both graduates and move on to your next adventures. All right, Board, we are down to agenda approval.
Mr. President, I move to approve the agenda dated May 22, 2018, as prepared.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments? Veronica, please pull the board.
Mr. Troncho? Mr. David Ek?
Aye.
Mr. Math?
Aye.
Mr. McCoy?
Aye.
Mr. Valenti?
Aye.
Item three, minutes.
Mr. President, I move the Board of Education approve the regular board meeting minutes dated May 8, 2018.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any comments? No comments. Veronica, please pull the board.
Mr. Troncho?
Yes.
Mr. David Ek?
Aye.
Mr. Math?
Aye.
Mr. McCoy?
Aye.
Mr. Valenti?
Aye.
All right, we have one more set.
Mr. President, I move the Board of Education approve the special board meeting minutes dated May 8, 2018.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments? No comments. Veronica, please pull the board.
Mr. Troncho?
Yes.
Mr. David Ek?
Aye.
Mr. Math?
Aye.
Mr. McCoy?
Aye.
Mr. Valenti?
Aye.
Fantastic. Now we're moving on to recognitions. We have some Fred Award winners, Mr. Steve Saunders and Mr. Mike Lynch.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, members of the Board, Dr. Swanson. Before many people do go away for the summer, we actually have two sets of awards to present tonight because these people are really the heart and soul of the district in so many ways, so many ways. First, we're doing the Fred Awards and Mike Lynch is here and actually, as he's going to explain to you, we are also presenting them a little bit differently tonight as well. Mike.
Mr. President, members of the Board, Dr. Swanson, I'm excited tonight to introduce this quarter's Fred winners and as Steve mentioned, we wanted to maybe make it more authentic, so what we have done is invited the person who nominated the Fred winner to actually read what they wrote for them to win the award. So first, if we could have our first Fred winner, Brenda Rebogero, and Leona Lawless, who wrote the nomination, if you guys could come on down.
Amber did not give me a time limit, so I thought, well, this is the most important thing you're going to do tonight, and she couldn't be with us because she had fifth grade continuation. But my name is Leona Lawless and I'm a preschool teacher at Hodgkins Elementary, and let me tell you about Brenda. I have had the privilege to work alongside her for almost five years now, and there are many reasons why I think she's great. First, she is the hardest worker I have ever known. She looks for what needs to be done and gets it done right away. I can always depend on her to make materials or come up with ideas for the preschoolers. Second, she is the most humble and respectful person I have ever worked with. Even after all these years together, she still calls me Mrs. Lawless. Third, she is amazing with young children. She truly cares about students and their families. She is just as comfortable playing with kids on the floor and working with them and teaching them as she is conversing with parents and helping them figure out problems, especially our Spanish-speaking parents. She's invaluable. Fourth, she is so smart. She is great at helping me with technology and as well as planning lessons and bouncing off ideas and coming up with new ideas. Mostly Brenda has a great heart. Her mama raised her well. She's right back here. Brenda has a patient, quiet spirit about her that just calms me down when I see her walking, when I see her when I walk in the room, which is no easy feat to calm me down. She is worth her weight in gold and while I have your attention, she needs more gold. I could go on all day about how awesome Brenda is. She is the best instructional assistant in the district, in my opinion. We work so well together. She's an amazing person that I am blessed to work with every day. I could go on all night, but thank you for giving us this opportunity to give her the Fred Award because she really deserves it.
Thank you.
Brenda, there's your trophy from Colorado STEM Academy. There's your signed, award-winning Best Seller Fred Factor, and then here is your Fred pin. We want you to wear this every day for the rest of your life. All right, so our next winner is in the audience. I saw her. It's Ms. Michelle Music and her surprise nominator, she doesn't know who nominated her, I think is here. Is he here, Tiffany? Oh, there, John Lamb. John Lamb, a student, come on down. There he is. Come on in.
That's great.
Come on, John. Bring those flowers. Bring her.
All flowers are reserved to the Board. Thank you.
Okay, well, Michelle Music deserves to be recognized because she truly is able to create a connection with students, whether that's in regards to art or just personal stuff. She is able to make a student's day better and wants to see students succeed all the time, like literally. She has touched the hearts of many and has a, and her personality, wait, what? I wrote this weird. She wants to see her students grow as artists or even as people because that's where she comes into play because she's changed me, not just art, because I was bad at art. I got better. But she dedicated a lot of her time to just Art Club, the GT program, being one of the sponsors, being a teacher in the IB program. Like, she just does a lot for us and yeah.
Michelle, here is your Fred trophy from the Colorado STEM Academy. Here is your signed Fred Factor book, and here is your Fred pin, and I know, I'm sure Tiffany would love to say stuff too, but this is so well-deserved. Congratulations.
We're waiting for the next.
Sweet nomination.
I don't know. I think it was just leftover from something.
All right, now we are moving down to Educational Support Professional of the Year, Mr. Steve Saunders and Mr. Kirk Leday.
And that would be Kirk's cue. As we said, we've got two sets of awards tonight, and Kirk's going to tell you in greater detail about our winners. Kirk?
Mr. President, members of the Board and Dr. Swanson, I am honored to present to the Board four outstanding educational support professionals as this year's Outstanding ESP Employees of the Year. The four individuals to be honored tonight have been identified for their special qualities that support improvement of student achievement. Each of these individuals is a distinguished representative of our educational support staff. First, we have Jacqueline Archileta, who is an office assistant at Metz Elementary School, and her supervisor Claudette Traill.
So I am honored to be here tonight to recognize an outstanding, amazing human being who is a vital member of our school community, Jackie Archileta. Jackie has worked in a variety of departments in our district, serving our community in roles in finance, at the middle school level, and for the last four years at Metz. This is her 17th year serving our district, and I could not be more proud of her. So this evening, we have her family, our staff, raise your hand, staff, and our parents here, just to celebrate Jackie and the work she does. She is one of the first people that greets our families when they come in, whether that's for registration or just on a daily basis. She puts Band-Aids on our babies when they're crying. I've seen her console them. Every day, she takes time out of her day to have the kindergartners read to her. In addition, and this is kind of a bragging point, I've not met anyone else that can do this, she single-handedly runs the entire lunchroom during lunches exceptionally well, and she rotates 314 babies through that cafeteria like on point. And so that's just a few snapshots of the thing that Jackie does, but I think the thing that's the most exciting for me to share is her heart. She gives everything to our community and our families. She will go out of her way to support them. She is well-respected and loved, and she's bilingual. So she's welcoming to our families that need that in their native language, and we just could not be more proud of her. She's one of the leaders on the office team, and she has put in some exceptional protocols, and I just can't tell you how much I love her, so thanks, Jackie.
Next, we have Geraldine Grauer, Special Services Assistant at Mesa Elementary School, and her supervisor, Janelle Statsney.
It is my honor and pleasure to be standing here with Geraldine Grauer, who we know as Ms. Jerry. Highly skilled, positive attitude, patience, these are just a few of the words that I can use that describe Jerry. Jerry is an instructional assistant at Mesa in our Autism Learning Center. She first started at Mesa last year as a long-term substitute in our special education program, and as soon as we found out that we were getting an autism learning center at Mesa, we immediately thought of Jerry and just had to have her on our team, so we couldn't be more proud to have her. What is special about Jerry is every day she walks into the classroom and into Mesa, she has a cheerful attitude and always a smile on her face. Every time when I run into her each day, she always pulls me aside and she says, you know, "I really love working here. I love working with these kids." Every day she says that. It's absolutely amazing. So what does Jerry do? She works closely with students in the small group setting. She reinforces their math, literacy, and social skills. Now, working with children who have autism can be challenging because many of these students have difficulty focusing on their work, but Jerry is incredibly patient with the students. She's able to push the students who need encouragement, but is also to be able to be kind and compassionate when they're having difficulty. Jerry is quick to provide positive reinforcement and a smile when students are successful. Another special thing about Jerry is she is fluent in both English and Spanish, and she's able to use these skills to help students with emerging English language skills. There are times when some of our students have difficulty expressing themselves in English, so Jerry is able to recognize this and provides encouragement in both Spanish and in English for the kids. And this provides the students opportunities to also reinforce their English concepts. Jerry's bilingual abilities help the teams communicate with the families also during pickup and drop-off time. Jerry, I have to tell you, you go above and beyond expectations. In order to better understand our population, she completed over 30 hours of professional development focused on the autism spectrum disorders. Through this professional development course, Jerry learned about the emotional regulation, prompting behavior management, and teaching strategies that work best for students with autism. Because of this training, Jerry speaks the language of autism and is able to anticipate the needs of our students before they become dysregulated. And last, Jerry is a member of our community. She takes pride in our community and her long residency here in Westminster. Because of this, she's able to, she has the ability to connect with many of our families. She's able to gain a level of trust and understanding with our students as well as families. Students feel safe with Jerry and they can learn from her. Our entire Mesa Special Education Team worked on our nomination. For you to get this distinguished honor, we have Jerry's family here in the audience. We have several members here at Mesa. So Jerry, this is well-deserved. Thank you for coming to Mesa. Thank you for being my friend. I love you.
Next, we have Annie Rivard, Special Services Assistant at Fairview Elementary School, and her supervisor, Camille Carlson.
I had something prepared, but I just think I want to talk about Anne for a second. She works in our Adaptive Skills Program, so for those of you that don't know, it's our students that are medically fragile. All are, well, we have one that ambulates now, but they are wheelchair-bound and non-verbal. They require G-tube feeding, diapering, and lots of love. And so Anne does that every day. She does it tirelessly. It has been a challenge. We've added a student that does ambulate, so that brings its own challenges to the program, but she has taken on leadership roles when it needed to be taken on, and she has risen to an occasion that I wouldn't expect any parent professional to do. And so much so, she is, she, this is her calling. She is going back to school to get her master's degree. She already has her bachelor's, but she is headed back in hopes to get a licensed position in, in a similar position, I guess, one that would be with significant support needs. And so I would just say-
Sign her up, Mr. Leday.
I would just say that we couldn't do it without Anne and her amazing leadership in there, and I'm going to miss you, but I will be back.
Next, we have Carol Rule at Harris Park Elementary School and her supervisor, Nancy Ritchie.
What a great way to culminate the year than, there's no better way than to honor the people that make the great happen here, so this is awesome. Ms. Carol Rule gives new meaning to the idea of school culture and community. She takes incredible initiative, going above and beyond in all situations, to ensure the best possible overall school experience for every student, their families, and staff members. She's incredibly intuitive and responds to every situation with kindness, grace, and poise. Ms. Rule is one of the first adults that our students see when they arrive in the morning, and she is a major factor in our overall welcoming and positive school climate and culture at Harris Park. Carol notices minute nuance, and she acts on it. She excels with customer service and communicates effectively with all families in every situation, catering the conversation to their needs. She builds personal relationships with each student, learning about them as individuals and as students. She engages students in a way that is meaningful to them. We have one little boy who's absolutely adorable, and he adores surprising her. And so he comes into the office in a very sneaky way every single day, every day, when he comes to get his medication, and Ms. Carol, she pretends not to notice him every day, no matter how busy she is, no matter how hard the day has been, she pretends not to notice him, and she acts so surprised when he pops up from anywhere. And he giggles and laughs and thinks it's the greatest thing in the world. And that's just one small example of how Ms. Rule engages our students. She takes care of our students' primary needs, their physiological, nourishment and care, safety, love, belonging, and esteem, so they can maximize their learning within classrooms. She literally takes care of our children like they're her own, almost as though Maslow's hierarchy of human needs is designed off of her work with people. She has built tremendous relationships with district staff and is able to problem-solve a significant number of concerns that come her way, and she readily seeks support or assistance if needed. And perhaps what brings me the most awe from Carol's work is that with every season and holiday, she transformed Harris Park to create rich, tangible, visceral experiences for our students. Our school could be showcased on Pinterest for the brilliance and creativity of her work. Fall, winter, Valentine, spring, and so much more. She created an entire Polar Express train in our front office for the winter holiday. On Dr. Seuss's birthday, she created an experience of going to school inside of books. Most recently, she transformed our school to a galaxy far, far away, creating an entire Star Wars theme for each facet of our field day on May 4. Carol takes an idea or a concept, and she breathes life into it and turns it into a full-blown experience for every member of our school community. She brings such joy to our building, and being able to bear witness to her genius warms my heart. She genuinely makes a difference in the lives of each of our children. Ms. Rule is loved and appreciated for who she is and for all that she does. Thank you, Carol, for going above and beyond in every situation. You're one in a bazillion million.
These are four of our outstanding educational support professionals who work tirelessly to ensure that our students succeed, and there are also trophies for each candidate, so supervisors, please grab a trophy for your person, and then I think you have a photo op with the Board.
Thank you. Thank you. Ready now? We're waiting for the next. All right, now we are moving down to Educational Support Professional of the Year, Mr. Steve Saunders and Mr. Kirk Leday.
And that would be Kirk's cue. As we said, we've got two sets of awards tonight, and Kirk's going to tell you in greater detail about our winners. Kirk?
Mr. President, members of the Board and Dr. Swanson, I am honored to present to the Board four outstanding educational support professionals as this year's Outstanding ESP Employees of the Year. The four individuals to be honored tonight have been identified for their special qualities that support improvement of student achievement. Each of these individuals is a distinguished representative of our educational support staff. First, we have Jacqueline Archileta, who is an office assistant at Metz Elementary School, and her supervisor, Claudette Traill.
Good evening. So I am honored to be here tonight to recognize an outstanding, amazing human being who is a vital member of our school community, Jackie Archileta. Jackie has worked in a variety of departments in our district, serving our community in roles in finance, at the middle school level, and for the last four years at Metz. This is her 17th year serving our district, and I could not be more proud of her. So this evening, we have her family, our staff, raise your hand, staff, and our parents here, just to celebrate Jackie and the work she does. She is one of the first people that greets our families when they come in, whether that's for registration or just on a daily basis. She puts Band-Aids on our babies when they're crying. I've seen her console them. Every day, she takes time out of her day to have the kindergartners read to her. In addition, and this is kind of a bragging point, I've not met anyone else that can do this, she single-handedly runs the entire lunchroom during lunches exceptionally well, and she rotates 314 babies through that cafeteria like on point. And so that's just a few snapshots of the thing that Jackie does, but I think the thing that's the most exciting for me to share is her heart. She gives everything to our community and our families. She will go out of her way to support them. She is well-respected and loved, and she's bilingual, so she's welcoming to our families that need that in their native language, and we just could not be more proud of her. She's one of the leaders on the office team, and she has put in some exceptional protocols, and I just can't tell you how much I love her, so thanks, Jackie.
Thank you, Jackie. Next, we have Geraldine Grauer, Special Services Assistant at Mesa Elementary School, and her supervisor, Janelle Statsney.
Good evening. It is my honor and pleasure to be standing here with Geraldine Grauer, who we know as Ms. Jerry. Highly skilled, positive attitude, patience, these are just a few of the words that I can use that describe Jerry. Jerry is an instructional assistant at Mesa in our Autism Learning Center. She first started at Mesa last year as a long-term substitute in our special education program, and as soon as we found out that we were getting an autism learning center at Mesa, we immediately thought of Jerry and just had to have her on our team, so we couldn't be more proud to have her. What is special about Jerry is every day she walks into the classroom and into Mesa, she has a cheerful attitude and always a smile on her face. Every time when I run into her each day, she always pulls me aside and she says, you know, "I really love working here. I love working with these kids." Every day she says that. It's absolutely amazing. So what does Jerry do? She works closely with students in the small group setting. She reinforces their math, literacy, and social skills. Now, working with children who have autism can be challenging because many of these students have difficulty focusing on their work, but Jerry is incredibly patient with the students. She's able to push the students who need encouragement, but is also to be able to be kind and compassionate when they're having difficulty. Jerry is quick to provide positive reinforcement and a smile when students are successful. Another special thing about Jerry is she is fluent in both English and Spanish, and she's able to use these skills to help students with emerging English language skills. There are times when some of our students have difficulty expressing themselves in English, so Jerry is able to recognize this and provides encouragement in both Spanish and in English for the kids. And this provides the students opportunities to also reinforce their English concepts. Jerry's bilingual abilities help the teams communicate with the families also during pickup and drop-off time. Jerry, I have to tell you, you go above and beyond expectations. In order to better understand our population, she completed over 30 hours of professional development focused on the autism spectrum disorders. Through this professional development course, Jerry learned about the emotional regulation, prompting behavior management, and teaching strategies that work best for students with autism. Because of this training, Jerry speaks the language of autism and is able to anticipate the needs of our students before they become dysregulated. And last, Jerry is a member of our community. She takes pride in our community and her long residency here in Westminster. Because of this, she's able to, she has the ability to connect with many of our families. She's able to gain a level of trust and understanding with our students as well as families. Students feel safe with Jerry, and they can learn from her. Our entire Mesa Special Education Team worked on our nomination. For you to get this distinguished honor, we have Jerry's family here in the audience. We have several members here at Mesa. So Jerry, this is well-deserved. Thank you for coming to Mesa. Thank you for being my friend. I love you.
Next, we have Annie Rivard, Special Services Assistant at Fairview Elementary School, and her supervisor, Camille Carlson.
Okay, good evening. I had something prepared, but I just think I want to talk about Anne for a second. She works in our Adaptive Skills Program, so for those of you that don't know, it's our students that are medically fragile. All are, well, we have one that ambulates now, but they are wheelchair-bound and non-verbal. They require G-tube feeding, diapering, and lots of love. And so Anne does that every day. She does it tirelessly. It has been a challenge. We've added a student that does ambulate, so that brings its own challenges to the program, but she has taken on leadership roles when it needed to be taken on, and she has risen to an occasion that I wouldn't expect any parent professional to do. And so much so, she is, she, this is her calling. She is going back to school to get her master's degree. She already has her bachelor's, but she is headed back in hopes to get a licensed position in, in a similar position, I guess, one that would be with significant support needs. And so I would just say-
Sign her up, Mr. Leday.
I would just say that we couldn't do it without Anne and her amazing leadership in there, and I'm going to miss you, but I will be back.
Next, we have Carol Rule at Harris Park Elementary School and her supervisor, Nancy Ritchie.
Hi, everybody. What a great way to culminate the year, then. There's no better way than to honor the people that make the great happen here, so this is awesome. Ms. Carol Rule gives new meaning to the idea of school culture and community. She takes incredible initiative, going above and beyond in all situations, to ensure the best possible overall school experience for every student, their families, and staff members. She's incredibly intuitive and responds to every situation with kindness, grace, and poise. Ms. Rule is one of the first adults that our students see when they arrive in the morning, and she is a major factor in our overall welcoming and positive school climate and culture at Harris Park. Carol notices minute nuance, and she acts on it. She excels with customer service and communicates effectively with all families in every situation, catering the conversation to their needs. She builds personal relationships with each student, learning about them as individuals and as students. She engages students in a way that is meaningful to them. We have one little boy who's absolutely adorable, and he adores surprising her. And so he comes into the office in a very sneaky way every single day, every day, when he comes to get his medication, and Ms. Carol, she pretends not to notice him every day, no matter how busy she is, no matter how hard the day has been, she pretends not to notice him, and she acts so surprised when he pops up from anywhere. And he giggles and laughs and thinks it's the greatest thing in the world. And that's just one small example of how Ms. Rule engages our students. She takes care of our students' primary needs, their physiological, nourishment and care, safety, love, belonging, and esteem, so they can maximize their learning within classrooms. She literally takes care of our children like they're her own, almost as though Maslow's hierarchy of human needs is designed off of her work with people. She has built tremendous relationships with district staff and is able to problem-solve a significant number of concerns that come her way, and she readily seeks support or assistance if needed. And perhaps what brings me the most awe from Carol's work is that with every season and holiday, she transformed Harris Park to create rich, tangible, visceral experiences for our students. Our school could be showcased on Pinterest for the brilliance and creativity of her work. Fall, winter, Valentine, spring, and so much more. She created an entire Polar Express train in our front office for the winter holiday. On Dr. Seuss's birthday, she created an experience of going to school inside of books. Most recently, she transformed our school to a galaxy far, far away, creating an entire Star Wars theme for each facet of our field day on May 4. Carol takes an idea or a concept, and she breathes life into it and turns it into a full-blown experience for every member of our school community. She brings such joy to our building, and being able to bear witness to her genius warms my heart. She genuinely makes a difference in the lives of each of our children. Ms. Rule is loved and appreciated for who she is and for all that she does. Thank you, Carol, for going above and beyond in every situation. You're one in a bazillion million.
These are four of our outstanding educational support professionals who work tirelessly to ensure that our students succeed, and there are also trophies for each candidate, so supervisors, please grab a trophy for your person, and then I think you have a photo op with the Board.
Thank you. Thank you. So everybody pivot towards me. You start looking at me first, and then you, not while I'm going on, same lights, and then somebody else. Congratulations. 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 Congratulations.
As you know, tomorrow is the last day on the calendar for Westminster Public Schools students, except for STEM. I believe our Colorado STEM Academy finishes Thursday. Jenny's here somewhere. Yeah, right. And we'll be wrapping that up, but that certainly does not mean that learning of our students or support of our students will stop, not by any stretch. Next week, we begin our 37th week classes here at Westminster High School. The 37th week is being offered beginning Tuesday, May 29 through June 6. About 80 students will be participating, including some who will finish their work and earn enough credits to graduate this summer, so we're looking forward to that. Also, next week, our free summer breakfast and lunch program begins. It's something we are very proud of because we know a lot of our families who are tight on budgets depend on the program for nutritious meals when their kids are not in school. And this summer, breakfast is only provided at Westminster High School from 8:00 to 9:00 a.m., but lunch is available from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at seven sites. And here are the sites. You see them up there on the screen. So I won't read them all to you, but they're throughout our school district, and I like to say our district is a district without borders. We're also partnering with some city-related facilities as well. Last year, we served close to 100,000 meals, so I know David Mackey and the team will have a busy summer ahead of them, and I see him nodding his head up there. I also want to say congratulations to the Westminster High School senior class of 2018. They are record breakers. As we announced last week at the senior awards ceremony, this class earned nearly $4 million in scholarships, and that included two Daniels Fund scholarship winners. As always, thank you to everyone who participated in bringing those scholarships about, including the Westminster Public Schools Foundation and all the volunteers who participated in the scholarship interview processes. We have a lot of deserving students. Board members, you were all with me Saturday night for this wonderful graduation ceremony at the First Bank Center. We had around 400 students walk across the stage to receive their diplomas, great speeches from our students. It was just a remarkable ceremony, and standing room only. I don't know what we're going to do if we get much bigger. I hate to go to tickets, but it's either that or find a new place to have graduations. So it's a good problem to have, but we'll be monitoring that as we move forward. And I don't think I've ever heard our choir, our banner orchestra, sounding better than they did Saturday night. They really rocked the house. It was also a special night for Kifany Kiwed, our principal. Is Kifany still in the room? Very, our Kif. She shared with her kids, at the same time that the class of 2018 started as freshmen, she started her first year as freshman principal. And so in a way, they all grew and learned together. And what I'd like to do is also remind us that tomorrow night, Hidden Lakes graduation will be occurring at 7:00 p.m. at Random Middle School, and I'm hearing we will have probably a third more students than we normally do. It was 98 this afternoon, it could be even a little bit higher by tomorrow night, so we're really looking forward to that. And I think it'll be interesting, because I think the construction's still going on down Federal, and we've been sending out... Is it Federal? Yeah, Federal.
Eightieth.
Eightieth, sorry. Eightieth, that other street. And I know, Steve, we sent out an email to families, and tomorrow we're doing another robo-call blast-out.
Well, I know that when they went to rehearsals...
Okay. All right. So looking forward to that. This was a fun and important morning. Let me just switch gears here. Who excelled in our after-school math academy. This was a partnership we had with the school district and the foundation. And Matt... Where's Matt? Matt and I did the road show this morning. We felt like the Publishers Clearinghouse Prize Patrol, because we had 25 of our students who had a year and a half's worth of growth in their academic goal and 95% attendance rate for the four-day-a-week program. And we were able to award 25 students at several schools iPads of their own. That's what they were working toward. And it was a cool, cool thing to see their faces. You see some of them there on the screen. In all, we had 163 students take advantage of the academy, and when all the Scantron scores are tabulated and correlated with students in the academy, I'm sure we're going to find out that it was a worthwhile investment, and I'm thinking we're looking at the end of the week for that. Is that right? Yeah. I see Jenny nodding her head. All right. And finally, a big shout-out to Roger Vadeen and the kids at Sunset Ridge Elementary. Yesterday, they presented a $1,700 check to Iraq Gronk to support his Seeds of South Sudan program. They raised the money earlier this spring by having students pay money to buy strips of duct tape to stick Roger and the P.E. teacher, Jeff Sabian, to the wall. They more than doubled their goal, and Iraq, who is a custodian at Sunset Ridge and has been before our board with this incredible story, is one of the lost boys of Sudan who ended up in a refugee camp in Kenya. And since coming to Colorado, he has made it his life's mission to raise money so that orphans... Right. Still in the camp can receive a proper education and lead future generations of South Sudan. So tomorrow's What's Up, WPS has a video about their efforts in this fundraising event, and also we'll send you a video, everybody who subscribes to that, for a year-end review for WPS. And I have one last thing to tell you, which I think is hot off the press. I know. Is that we had lots of graduations going on and still due tomorrow, but Ms. Leana Lawless, who was just here a minute ago, Matt and I stopped in, and her graduation was going on today, and I think you see a full-day preschool class doing their graduation. And the young man in the middle, if he looks familiar, it's probably because his mama is sitting right up there. That's Mr. Jackson Gatto. So cool beans for everybody. So anyway, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Board, any comments for Dr. Swanson? Questions? All right. Let's move on to the Board of Education discussion and reports. Board, do you have any comments?
Just echo Dr. Swanson's comments regarding the graduation. It was one of the best ones I've been to as a board member. Job well done, Kifany. It was really, really a good night.
Thank you.
I think I want to add is that, you know, it's huge for us to have kids get about $4 million worth of scholarships. That's huge. You know, when we look at a class, graduating class of 400, and we have $4 million in scholarships, you can't... I don't think you match that anywhere around here. I myself, I told the rest of the board, there's a different vibe I saw in graduation, and there's a vibe, I think, with WPS, and so I think this is our year, and I think we just need to keep that momentum moving forward. So, good job.
Excellent. Any other comments?
It was a busy week indeed. Kifany, my hat's off to you for running a good graduation. My favorite part of graduation in the last two years has been the fact that you guys graduate not in alphabetical order, but by cohort with their student advisors, so that some of us who have a last name at the end of the alphabet aren't always last. A lifetime of, like, maybe two people behind me, it's refreshing to see the first person get called up, have a last name beginning with a Y or a Z. So it's very nice, and I appreciated that there was a nice, relaxed tone that gave everybody enough time to have their names properly read, and that it was not a... Nope, my thing just went out here. There it is. That it was not a chow line. So, well done, and congratulations to you for it being your anniversary of your graduation that night. I won't say the number, but congratulations. It was a very special evening, and for me in particular, because I got to give a couple people diplomas that I've wanted to do that for a very long time. So, well done. Foundation stuff was great, the scholarships were great, the program was too long, everybody agreed. It's a good problem to have, maybe the possibility of two programs next year, but as we entered Hour Three, people were a bit restless. So, but yes, it was very good. Tomorrow morning is the Mesa continuation, too early of an hour, but I have scheduled alarms and wake-up calls, and then Hidden Lake graduation. And I'm very happy with the numbers that you'll hear later tonight on the contract ratification. It's as close to perfect as it's ever been. I guess there's only a couple of crabby souls in our organization, and that ain't bad. So, well done. Rosie, thank you for getting it done early. And, you know, we're moving forward this year, and we all get to close the books. And Jenny, love the new hairdo. So, that's all I have.
All righty. Anything else? The only thing I'd like to echo is just, you know, if I could have all of your yearbooks and just write, "Have a nice summer," since that's coming up, but in reality, for the families out there who do watch and do pay attention to make sure we're looking to see what activities our children can be involved in over the summer, to hopefully avoid any summer milt or anything along those lines, to keep them engaged, keep them active. And for the teachers, staff, including family and administration, just to be safe this summer and, you know, get well-rested, because we're going to be at it next year, and we're going to put the grind, you know, put ourselves to the grind again, as we always do, because I do think this district, as well as the students in the district, are resilient. And that's one of the things that I think is a characteristic that we always underestimate, and I think that's important to always throw out there, because we all are. And keep that as your, I guess, mantra for the rest of the summer, is be resilient. All right. With that, we move on to audience comments, and we do have an audience comment tonight. The name of the audience member is WPTV, and they would like to speak about the board and what I think of them, which usually we don't allow any personal comments or anything along those lines, but being that these are students, come on down, let's hear it. So this is Victor and John, and they have both graduated, so give them a hand. Usually, we put a timer up of five minutes, but we'll let you go, but know that the board does have questions following your commentary, so thank you.
Well, good evening, Mr. President, Dr. Swanson and members of the board. My name is Victor Perez, as you all know. This evening, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to work and gain experience.
Use the mic, Victor. You know better than that.
You're right. I hope Sam doesn't get mad at me. He's in the back room, listening. I want to thank you. It's been an honor to work doing this and knowing each one of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Victor.
Thanks, Victor.
Good evening, members of the board, Dr. Swanson. Wow, it's interesting being on the other side of this. I usually just sit behind a camera the entire time. Thank you, guys, for the experience I've gained through this. Because of you guys and because of a letter, a nice letter of recommendation by Jeff, I am able to move and do a production company, setting up lights and sound this summer for concerts in different venues. It was a bumpy ride, but you guys helped me through it, and this was a great experience. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, guys.
And then I do have one thing to say as well. This is weird being on this side. I don't think I've ever been in this room for a board meeting. It's super strange. But I want to thank all of you, Dr. Swanson and Steve Saunders, for giving me the opportunity and the resources to teach all of these kids in the worlds of video production and also backstage productions as well. You've provided a place for these students to be able to practice camera operations and live video switching using current technology that a lot of these students could go into a video or TV job immediately and know how to use the equipment there. And in fact, Sam Johnson, who's currently in the studio, is live-switching on his own, and he's using current technology or the same equipment that he'll encounter when he goes into film school in a few short months. So Veronica, I think, just passed out a short token of gratitude from these kids, so we just want to say thank you again for everything.
Thank you, and... Thanks for always making us look good, even though we put our foot in our mouth every now and then, but we appreciate that. And I know that some of the other board members will have something to say, so thank you, and I wish you all the best.
No, just, Victor, you're... Can you tell us what you're doing?
Metro, right?
This fall, I will be attending Metropolitan State University, studying construction project management and minoring in theatrical staging.
Nice.
Congratulations.
Victor, you're still not getting a couch.
Yeah.
All right. Well, on that note, can I get a raise now?
You never got that raise either.
Absolutely. You know, it's fun. You're the second cycle of students through since I've been here. Young Sammy, who I knew before she was born, is now a successful TV camera person with Altitude Networks and is doing quite well, thanks to the mentoring of Mr. Saunders and Wayne Cox before. Your Saturday night was Kifany's first group, tonight is Jeff's first group, and I've watched you guys grow with him and go through hard times and high jinks. Sam up there, Lucas, who couldn't make it tonight, and Isaiah, who actually moved unfortunately, but hopefully he graduated and is on his way as well. But it's been fun to watch you. My proudest moment was when the school caught fire when we were in the middle of American Idol, and I watched the... I watched you kids behind the stage, just as if nothing was going on, get the riggings down, get systems shut down appropriately, usher people out the door, keep the building safe, keep the people safe, and you didn't miss a beat. There's no doubt in my mind that you're all going to go very, very far in whatever you choose to do in life, except for be a sofa salesman, Victor. So it's been my privilege. Captain Kirk, thank you for leading us on the voyage through this for many, many, many meetings. Youngest winner of a Bobby G Award in the state of Colorado, winning as a freshman. So, well done to all of you. Good luck. Come back, call us if you need anything, we're here. But not a couch.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, guys.
All right. We do not have any other audience comments, so we are moving down to business items. We have item 8.1, Personnel Matters, with Mr. Kirk Leday.
Mr. President, members of the board and Dr. Swanson, I've prepared for you a personnel report containing items 1.0, 2.0, 3.0, and 5.0, and addendum 7.0 and 8.0 for your consideration and approval.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I move that the Board of Education approve Personnel Matters as presented on item 1.0, 2.0, 3.0, 5.0, as well as the addendum. Now we're moving on to additional Personnel Matters, is that correct? Okay.
On May 4, 2018, the district received a report from arbitrator Harry McLean in the matter of the arbitration between the Westminster Education Association and Westminster Public Schools. In accordance with Article L 6-5-13 of the License and Employees Agreement, the Board of Education is required to act on the arbitrator's advisory report regarding this case within 30 days of its receipt of the report. The administration recommends that the Board of Education accept the hearing officer's recommendation.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I move the Board of Education accept the hearing officer's recommendation in the WEA versus WPS arbitration.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments? Veronica, please pull the board.
Mr. Chancho?
Yes.
Mr. David Ek?
Aye.
Mr. Math?
Aye.
Mr. McCoy?
Aye.
Mr. Valenti?
Aye.
Thank you. And do we have item... In looking at what we just proposed as the business item, we went from items 1.0, 2.0, 3.0, 5.0, as well as the addendum. Now we're moving on to additional Personnel Matters, is that correct? Okay.
On May 4, 2018, the district received a report from arbitrator Harry McLean in the matter of the arbitration between the Westminster Education Association and Westminster Public Schools. In accordance with Article L 6-5-13 of the License and Employees Agreement, the Board of Education is required to act on the arbitrator's advisory report regarding this case within 30 days of its receipt of the report. The administration recommends that the Board of Education accept the hearing officer's recommendation.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I move the Board of Education accept the hearing officer's recommendation in the WEA versus WPS arbitration.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments? Veronica, please pull the board.
Mr. Chancho?
Yes.
Mr. David Ek?
Aye.
Mr. Math?
Aye.
Mr. McCoy?
Aye.
Mr. Valenti?
Aye.
Thank you. All right. Now, moving on to item 8.3, Ratification of Contracts, with Mr. Kirk Leday.
I'm pleased to present to the Board of Education the tentative agreements between the Board of Education and the Westminster Education Association for Licensed and Educational Support Professionals for the 2018-2019 school year. The Westminster Education has two recognized bargaining units, licensed staff and educational support professionals. Negotiations began in February of 2018, and tentative agreements were reached on May 7, 2018. The voting went as such, 98% of our licensed staff and ESP staff who participated in the vote voted in favor of the contract. The financial impact, ESP will receive steps, our ESP staff will receive a 3.4% increase, licensed staff will receive steps, licensed staff will also receive a 3.4% increase. in February of 2018, and tentative agreements were reached on May 7th, 2018. The voting went as such, 98% of our licensed staff and ESP staff who participated in the vote voted in favor of the contract. The financial impact, ESP will receive steps, our ESP staff will receive a 3.4% increase, licensed staff will receive steps, licensed staff will also receive a 3.4% increase, license horizontals in January of 2019, and we're going to add a step to the bottom of the license and ESP salary schedules, health and dental insurance increases for all employee groups, and para contribution increase for all employee groups for a total estimated cost of $3.9 million. The administration recommends the Board of Education approve and ratify the revisions to the License and Employees Agreement and the Educational Support Employees Agreement effective July 1, 2018.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I move the Board of Education approve and ratify the revisions to the License and Employees Agreement and the Educational Support Professionals Agreement between the Westminster Public Schools and the Westminster Education Association effective July 1st, 2018.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments?
Just one. I'm glad we got through this and that it, we got off to a rough start, but that we ended in a much better place than we thought we would, and I think that's a testament to everybody taking a step back and saying, okay, we, we need to grow up and act a little better. While this isn't the largest number I've ever voted on in terms of raises, et cetera, it's maybe the most broad. There's the most I've ever seen in there, including COLA, and, and not a, not an insignificant COLA. So my only caution is, well done, everybody, but get those red shirts back out and keep the heat on the legislature, because if they don't come through next year, everybody in the state of Colorado is in trouble. And I hate to sound like a Debbie Downer on this, but it's the reality, and they truly do hold the key. And for the first time since I've been on this board, I think the General Assembly did the right thing. And instead of blabbling, they actually put their money where their mouth is. So keep the heat on them, Rosie.
Thank you. And just to echo off that, because I was going to make similar comments, but it's also, it's, it's anyone else who supports education needs to be down there. It's not just WA, it's, it's administration, it's board members, it's everyone. And again, don't let the legislature think that they gave us something, a win, because this is something that we've been doing for the last, well, five years while I've been here, and I know longer than that. So let's keep it, the pressure on them, because it's, it's needed for all of education, not just WPS.
And now's the time to do it. We have an election coming up in November. It's time to make our voice heard, make sure that the people get elected. We have a new governor coming in. It's up to us to make that decision and carry that forward. So get out there and push.
Mr. President, if I could just add one comment on that. The, what the legislature did with buying down a portion of the negative factor is a drop in the bucket.
Correct.
Compared to the billions that have been siphoned away from public education since 2008. So while it's a step in the right direction, we've got a long way to go.
And I think it amounts to, if I've done the math correctly, one entire budget value is what's owed to us in just negative factor. So, yeah, they're, they're doing nobody any favors. But this, it's probably going to get a lot of them elected to other offices, because I think just about everybody under the dome is running for another office. But they need to be held accountable. They hold the purse strings. It's the frustrating part of our job. We, we don't have that local control anymore, other than what we bargain, and they need to keep the money flowing.
Thank you. We have a motion, a second, and a number of comments. Veronica, please pull the board.
Mr. Troncho?
Yes.
Mr. David Eck?
Aye.
Mr. Math?
Aye.
Mr. McCoy?
Aye.
Mr. Valenti?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Kirk Lade. Now we're moving on to Pay for Success Project. It's annual renewer, renewal with Mr. Matt Abashan.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board, and Dr. Swanson. In order to continue the Board of Education's ongoing support of our youngest learners, the WPS ECE Division has undertaken an ambitious full-day preschool pilot program to determine if an extended preschool experience will provide better long-term outcomes for students than our traditional half-day programs. In order to ensure a statistically valid and unbiased data review of this study, the ECE Division will rely on a third-party evaluation partner to assess the study's results. To that end, the purpose of this business item is to seek approval for a contract between Westminster Public Schools and the Center for Assessment, Design, Research, and Evaluation, known as CADRE, that is housed at the University of Colorado at Boulder. As presented at the May 8th Board of Education Study Session, this contract is necessary in order to ensure an objective and comprehensive data analysis of our early childhood Pay for Success Project. At this time, the administration recommends that the Board of Education approve the contract between Westminster Public Schools and the Center for Assessment, Design, Research, and Evaluation, not to exceed $100,000 for the second year of this project.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I move the Board of Education approve funding for evaluation partner for the early childhood Pay for Success research pilot not to exceed $100,000.
Second.
We have a motion and second. Any comments? With no comments. Veronica, please pull the board.
Mr. Troncho?
Yes.
Mr. David Eck?
Aye.
Mr. Math?
Aye.
Mr. McCoy?
Aye.
Mr. Valenti?
Aye.
Thank you. Now moving on to 8.5 Emergency Repairs with Dr. James Duffy. You're the one we want to see.
Not really. I don't want any of these.
Mr. President, members of the board, Dr. Swanson. In February of this year, one of the boilers at Skyline Elementary ceased operation. The maintenance team was able to clean out the boiler tubing and restore some functionality to the unit, but what made this event especially worrisome is the fact that one of the three original boilers had been decommissioned years ago and had been cannibalized for parts to keep the remaining two boilers functioning. If we lost a second boiler, we would not be able to heat the entire building. In fact, classroom temperatures throughout the building would have hovered at unacceptable levels. The average temperature in Denver for February is historically 29 degrees, and with only one boiler functioning, the team determined the complete loss of the malfunctioning boiler could close school for an indeterminate period of time. In accordance with Board Policy DJ-R Purchasing Procedures, emergency contracts may be made directly to a vendor without a competitive bid process. Based on our past history with Landgraph Plumbing and Heating and their ability to meet our timeline, we awarded them the emergency contract. At this time, the administration recommends the Board of Education approve the use of capital reserve contingency funds for an emergency contract with Landgraph Plumbing and Heating in the amount of $84,207 for the replacement of boilers at Skyline Elementary.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I move the Board of Education approve the use of capital reserve contingency funds for an emergency contract with Landgraph Plumbing and Heating in the amount of $84,207 for the replacement of boilers at Skyline Elementary.
Second.
We have a motion and second. Any comments?
Yes. Don't look at me like that, James. I have no doubt that Landgraph can do the job, do it well, and do it responsibly, and not gouge the district. If anything, they probably undercharge. I've seen him do it before with Scott Carpenter. What concerns me is that Skyline Vista is one of two elementary schools, I believe, remaining that does... Interesting. That does not have air conditioning and unacceptable temperatures go in both directions. My body stops at 70 degrees. After that, I'm, I check out. Does the system that's going in there allow itself to be upgraded to add air conditioning or cooling system?
No.
So lay out the scenario of, of what it would take for Skyline.
So what, what the scenario would be, as you said, you mentioned two, we actually have three schools, FM Day, Skyline, and the Early Childhood Center, that we have not done mechanical upgrades to get cooling into the building. Later tonight, we will have a conversation, and the board has had conversation about long-term plans and going back to the community perhaps for a mill levy override for some capital upgrades. One of the things that we are going to propose is, while Skyline is one of the more recent buildings, even though 1970, you know, we're saying is recent, it is...
I think so. Maybe I'm biased personally.
One of our buildings that actually is probably in the worst condition, and, you know, long-term, what we'd like to do is replace that building with a K8 or another configuration on that campus and then scrape the existing building. But to do a mechanical upgrade, we'd have to do like we did with most of our other schools, and once we did that, we decommissioned the boilers in those schools. So the boilers we picked were good quality, and they'll get us through a number of years, but we did it with the idea that we are going to be doing something significantly different at that site.
Would those boilers that are being emergently bought be able to be used in another school? If Skyline is closed down, razed, rebuilt, would they be able to be harvested and used in another school that, say, had a boiler emergency?
Are you going to let me get by with them? Maybe yes, maybe no?
No.
You know, what, what my team will tell, tell you, I would believe, would be that, you know, the boilers are sized for the location and, and the particular use, and, you know, they're not as easy as just picking up and moving to another location. We would have to look at the other location and the, the type of plumbing, the connections we have there, and what we would need to do to that building to, to, you know, reuse those.
Any other questions? All right, we have a motion, a second, and some questions. Veronica, please pull the board.
Mr. Troncho?
Yes.
Mr. David Eck?
Aye.
Mr. Math?
Aye.
Mr. McCoy?
Aye.
Mr. Valenti?
Aye.
All right, moving on to item 8.6 Emergency Repairs at Westminster High School with the same...
Keeping with the theme of boilers.
Yep.
While Westminster High School is the newest facility in our portfolio, the size and usage of the building presents us with unique and significant maintenance challenges. For example, while the furnace in the average home kicks on and off for a limited period of time, heating the house to temperature and then resting between firings, the boilers in the high school are running 24/7 for most of the school year. This is directly related to the size of the building and the fact that the building never sleeps with events during the day, night, and on weekends. To properly function, the boiler's gas valves must open and close on command to allow the flow of gas to the burners. Our current valves are mechanical, which have more working parts that could fail and require much more adjustment. The valves original to the boilers are beginning to show wear, and in some cases are beginning to malfunction, either locking in the open position or not catching at all. This has resulted in higher carbon monoxide levels in the boiler room and has the potential to cause either no fire in the boiler or the possibility of pre-ignition or delayed ignition, both of which could result in an explosion. Given these circumstances, the team deemed the repairs an emergency. At this time, the administration recommends the Board of Education approve the use of capital reserve funds for an emergency contract with Wern Air in the amount of $204,000 for the repair of the boilers at Westminster High School.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
Mr. President, I move the Board of Education approve the use of capital reserve funds for an emergency contract with Wern Air in the amount of $204,000 for the repair of boilers at Westminster High School, a building that's nine years old.
Second.
We have a motion and second. Any comments, questions?
Just thank you for keeping it safe. I'm not happy at all about this item. This building is nine years old. This is a pretty big repair. But looking at it, I think I'd like to challenge Pam and James and Sandy to see about looking at the, at the budgets going forward and building an ongoing maintenance fund into each property in the district so that we don't keep running into these emergencies. I've got one year of emergencies left. You guys have a few more, but I come back to something that my colleague once said, and previous boards did future boards no favor by doing things like buying 30 boilers in one year, and then they all failed at once. We're not going to let that happen, and while there's been a good job of setting up the, the cycles with things, now we got to get the budgets to match it. Where the money will come from, I'm not sure, but that's part of it. That's how business runs.
Thank you. All right, any other comments? All right, we have a motion, a second. Veronica, please pull the board.
Mr. Troncho?
Yes.
Mr. David Eck?
Aye.
Mr. Math?
Aye.
Mr. McCoy?
Aye.
Mr. Valenti?
Aye.
Thank you, and you're going to stick with us one more time, Dr. James Duffy. The next is the renewal of the Food Service Management Company Agreement.
Okay. Since 2010, Westminster Public Schools has had a partnership with Chartwell's to operate our nutrition services. Not only has this partnership resulted in the elimination of an annual general fund transfer of approximately $500,000 to keep the program solvent, it has allowed us to reinvest in our kitchens and programming. Under Chartwell's oversight, our nutrition fund balance has grown to a point where we are able to invest a half a million dollars into the renovation of the kitchen and cafe at Hidden Lake High School, giving our Pro Start students a true production kitchen to learn in. We have also been able to invest in kitchen equipment district-wide and are now able to bring more and fresher food choices to our students. Not only has Chartwell's been a great partner for the district, they are a great partner for the community. Last year, in collaboration with the city of Westminster, they served just shy of 100,000 summer meals at sites throughout the city, and they are hoping, hoping to break the 100,000 mark this year. At this time, the administration recommends the Board of Education approve the renewal of the Food Services Management Company contract with Chartwell's 2018-2019 fiscal year.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
Mr. President, I move the Board of Education approve the renewal of the Food Services Management Company contract with Chartwell's for the 2018-2019 fiscal year.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Without any, Veronica, please pull the board.
Mr. Troncho?
Yes.
Mr. David Eck?
Aye.
Mr. Math?
Aye.
Mr. McCoy?
Aye.
Mr. Valenti?
Aye.
All right, thank you, Dr. Duffy. Moving on to our last business item 8.8. We have the second reading and adoption of policy JQ, student fees, presented by Mr. Max Math.
All right. So I think what I'm going to do is I'm just going to read the changes from the policy here, what was added in, and I'll go ahead and read that. The add to this is fee, fee refunds. Refunds will be processed within two weeks of dropping a class each semester unless accentuating circumstances exist. After the two-week course change request period ends at the start of each semester, no refunds will be granted. Non-payments of fees. If the district has made a reasonable effort to obtain payment of any assessed fee, payment for lost or damaged textbooks or library resources, and payment for lost or damaged school property at no avail, the district may deny the privilege of participating in the graduation ceremony. Alternative payment methods such as installment plans or school service shall apply to students who are unable to pay. Unpaid fees and fines that total more than $500 per student and there is no payment plan set up with the school, the amount outstanding will be sent to a collections.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
Second.
Did we, was that the motion?
He didn't give a motion.
He read the thing.
Yeah, we'll let you give the motion.
I move the Board of Education in, in accordance with policy BG, receive for second reading and adopt Board Policy JQ.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments?
Veronica, this is all on the website.
This is on the website, and then it's also available tonight outside on the table.
And where is it on the website?
It is, if you go to the board page to Board Doc... It is, if you go to the board page to Board Docs and it goes, it's available on the agenda item for tonight, as well as the one for May 8th, when we had it for the first reading.
And I can attest that the board has researched this along with the administration and had a lot of conversation in regards to this policy, as well as if you want to reflect back to our minutes, which we just approved for May 8th, 2018. One of our board members, our senior member, Dino Valenti, asked some pertinent questions pertaining to current processes and next steps to ensure that we collect more fees. So we have a motion, a second, a question, little commentary. Pull the board.
Mr. Troncho.
Yes.
Mr. Davidek.
Aye.
Mr. Math.
Aye.
Mr. McCoy.
Aye.
Mr. Valenti.
Aye.
Fantastic. We are on to item nine. The next regular meeting of the Board of Directors of Westminster Public Schools, an advanced accredited organization, will be Tuesday, June 12th, 2018 at 6:30 PM. The regular meeting will be held in the lecture hall of Westminster High School. Notices of meetings are posted in the window of the main interest of entrance of Westminster High School and on Board Docs 24 hours before each business meeting. Veronica, the time is now 7:41 and we are adjourned.